Dave Murray, God bless you. I got you back finally. How are you, sir?
Fine and dandy.
Fine and dandy.
You finally got me back.
It's like, I have hunted elusive rodents in my yard for weeks that were easier to catch than getting you.
I'm like the Yeti.
Dude, you're like that gopher that I, I actually had to rodatill the gopher. I feel terrible about this, but like I was trying to get him with a BB gun and with a trap and everything. And then I was rodatilling this part and he like jumped up. I accidentally rodatilled over his little house. I feel, it was like the secret of Nim. I felt terrible. Then he went running and then I was like, well, maybe I should throw him over the fence. But I was like, first off, I'm not picking him up. Second, like I throw him over the fence, he's just gonna run back. I had to dong him with a shovel. I was like dong. Anyway, how are you, sir? You're running for Middleton City Council, running for reelection. Talk to me about it.
Oh, boy. What do you want, what do you want to cover first? I mean, you know something about it. You've spoken to a few of the other candidates.
Yeah, look.
All three of them, actually.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, and it's like, first off, I appreciate that you're running for reelection. I appreciate that there are people out here that are like, listen, I think I have something to contribute. So first off, thank you for that. You are running for reelection, though, and that means to me that you understand how complex the, and how limited your capacity is. First off, you're on a council. You don't have individual power. This is one of the things that somebody from the education, uh, school boards association actually told me. This guy, Phil Gore, he's like, listen, people think that they're gonna run for school boards and they're gonna do all these things. And in reality, you're one of like five people, you know? So anybody who's saying, hey, I'm going to individually do this. It's like, man, you gotta work with other people. You gotta work with other people. You gotta garner votes. You gotta talk to the populist. Like, this is not an easy thing to do. And you don't have, like, you're not a king.
You have to gain consensus.
Yeah, exactly. So it's a difficult thing. And you're coming back, glutton for punishment, apparently. You're coming back to engage in again. What work has been done in Middleton? And what work do you still want to see completed in this next term?
You know, I had a friend of mine a few months back when we were gearing up for the campaign, and she said, you need to write down a list of everything you've accomplished. And I finally sat down to do it one night, and uh, it was, it was hard to remember everything because some things are big things, like the school ordinance, right? That was a big thing, made state history. Other things, they're, they're small, little things. They only matter to one person. So like, for example, you know, the city got a call one day. A gal had a, or has a husband who's a disabled vet, and he had some brain damage. And in a lot of neighborhoods in Middleton, when you pull, well, I think you have it here, when you pull up into the driveway, there's a bump, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that bump caused him a lot of pain every time they would leave or come home. And she wanted to know how we could fix it. And the city administrator reached out to me, since it was a veterans thing.
Yeah, yeah.
And I got ahold of VFW, which had actually just relocated from Caldwell to Middleton. And they went out and bought these little like rubber inserts.
Yeah, yeah. You put the, yeah, yeah, I know exactly what it is.
And so now they don't have that big bump. So that's just like a small thing. And it means the world to that, that husband and wife, but you know, it doesn't do anything for the city as a whole. So sitting down to write that list was, it was really difficult because it's, you know, four years of work, um, which I do, you know, I don't do the job part-time. You know, there are people online who say, well, earlier in the year, you know, we need somebody to run for city council, you know, you get a thousand dollars a month and you only have to work, what did they say? It was like six hours a month. And I was like, six hours? If you knew how much time I put into this job, I mean.
Did you, you should have made one of those bro social media clips. I get up at 3:00 AM and between 3:00 AM and 4:00 AM, I work six hours. I've already done a full month of work in one hour. And then I run three marathons before 7:00 AM, eat five chickens, and then I get after my second.
Well, it's not like, it's not like a, you know, a nine to five job where you sit down at nine and you leave at five. It's 24 hours a day. You could get an email. You can get a text. You can get a phone call. Somebody needs something. Somebody has a problem, you know? You're reading state code, trying to figure out how to, you know, find loopholes to get some, something done for the city, you know? I mean, researching wastewater treatment options, researching Aquifer recharge systems. I mean, all kinds of different things.
Yeah.
Um, and to sit down and try to write that list is almost impossible.
Yeah, I, listen, I'm not an elected official, and I don't, I don't think I could do your job. What I will tell you is that I, I absorb information all day long. This means 4:30 when I wake up, the first I get my cup of coffee and I look at my phone for the day, and it's like, I'll have 10 text messages with like eight different topics of, of all kinds of like relevant and important things. It's like, okay, here we go. We're starting to take in information, process it, figure out, you know, all these different things. And then it ends, like, when I go into a medically induced coma at 9:30 or 10, you know, it's like, I'm just, so yeah, like, I have a great appreciation when you're, when you're ingesting information. And it's not like I'm a decision maker at all, but people talk to me a lot about issues and things going on in the state. So, look, let's focus in on Middleton, okay? Talk to me about growth in Middleton. You and I in our first conversation quite a while ago, you know, we, we chatted about this. Where are we now with growth in Middleton?
So Middleton is still growing because as we discussed before, you know, we put the wastewater ordinance in place, we put the school ordinance in place, and that has stopped new preliminary plat applications. So for over two years now, I don't think we've seen a single new preliminary plat application.
And if I may ask, you, you guys are like the only ones in the state who proactively figured out a way to tether the, the new plat applications to quality of life in Middleton. Cause you're like, we are getting damaged, meaningfully damaged by this growth. Other people have talked about, you know, emergency moratoriums on growth. Other people have talked about impact fees and mitigation fees. Like, you have all of these things. Middleton is the only one I've ever heard of is like, okay, I think we got this. Hold my beer. Like, we figured it out.
Hold my beer. Watch this. Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, we did. Um, there are other cities that want to, you know, like there are multiple council members in Caldwell that have been interested almost since day one. Um, Kuna, Kuna did something similar. They didn't put it, it's not as concrete as our ordinance. I think it, it, anyways, I don't want to get into that.
Yeah, you know, it's fine.
liabilities form or something, but.
And by the way, I just got, I just read an article from Idaho Ed News that the Middleton, uh, Middleton School District is, they have to run a bond on the ballot one more time, but then they qualify for, I think, almost a $12 million loan from the state to build the elementary school. And that is at least in part because the city council put pressure on the builders and builders had to come to the table. The Middleton School District worked extremely hard to, to really, you know, parse out exactly what it needed and only have, so they were able to grind down the price and get donations from developers so that the school could be built. And in the absence of that ordinance, there wouldn't have been that motivation from all parties in the way, the way that Middleton worked it out.
Yeah, and I, I want to say Mike Moyle helped play a role in that. I'm not completely sure, but I think he did. Um, and I, I, I know more than I think I'm allowed to say, so I don't want to go too deep.
Sure, 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 sure. I'm sorry. Look, I got distracted. Talk to me about growth. So yeah, you've had, you had that kind of grinding of a halt in the recent years of plat applications.
Yeah, anyway, so, um, prior to that wastewater and that school ordinance, everything that was approved before that got to the final plat and got approved, that, that's a contract. That's all in place. So unless the developer violates that contract in some way, those homes are going in. Now, it's a good thing and it's a bad thing. It's a bad thing because we're still going to be growing at the average rate we have been for the last four or five years, which is pretty substantial. But it's also a good thing because that means the home prices are not going to skyrocket because homes have just stopped being built. So they're still being built at the average rate they have since, you know, 2020, 21, whatever. Um, but no new ones have come in, which also means that city staff can now focus on trying to get commercial and industrial development rather than having, because we have limited staff for a small town, you know, we don't have assistant planners and, and all that. Um, so our focus has turned to commercial and industrial development. That I think I can safely say for the whole council, that is our number one priority is, because right now we have like a 5% or 6% uh, commercial and industrial versus residential, 94, 95%, and that is extremely, extremely unhealthy for a tax base.
Okay, so talk to me about how to address it, because this is one thing that, that pretty much everybody's brought up. And by the way, Star, your neighbor, they were in a similar situation. They've worked, you know, I think over the last five years to essentially, they were at like a 96, four, and now they're at like an 86 or, you know, 85, 15. So they're working really, really hard in the same way to decrease the, the share of the tax base that is occupied by the residential. To do that, you, you can't just like wipe out the residential. You have to increase, you know, like 3X or 4X the, the commercial capacity and tax receipts. So like, how do we do that in Middleton?
So to kind of get the ball rolling, I think it was, it was last year, I wrote up a resolution which just kind of acknowledged, on behalf of the city council, that we acknowledge the importance of commercial and industrial development and what they bring to the community in recreation, in jobs, in shopping, in dining, all that. Um, so that was just kind of like a proclamation out to them because in the past, we've had a fairly bad reputation with a lot of developers, and that goes back 10, 15 years or more. Um, so that was just to kind of hope to, to signal to them that, you know, let's, let's start fresh. We understand what you bring and we want you here. Earlier this year, um, we started an initiative to try to analyze our city code and our processes to figure out what we were doing wrong, because we've been told over and over by various developers that we were too slow, we were too expensive, it was too difficult, you know, uh, there's too many steps compared to other cities. So we started trying to analyze what we could do to streamline that process and make it easier and faster for, for commercial and industrial developers that comes town. And I won't say that we're, we're perfect, but we've taken some steps to, um, to address those processes. At our last meeting, we did a lot of discussion on, uh, our impact fees and connection rates for water and wastewater and all that. And we compared them to, what was it, Star, Meridian, and one other town. And we had never done that before, saying, you know, looking at them side by side. And our connection fees and impact fees were horrendously high compared to other cities. So why would anyone come build, you know, a In-N-Out or something in, in Middleton if they can go do it in Star or Meridian or Caldwell for, you know, a hundred thousand dollars less? Of course, they're gonna go somewhere else. So we're gonna have a workshop, I want to say on November 12th, to look at lowering our impact fees and our connection fees for water and wastewater to try to incentivize them to come in. I've been asking, uh, the city administrator to add a new page to our city website, kind of like Kuna has. I don't know if you've ever looked at theirs, but Kuna has a special page that just addresses commercial and industrial development. You know, it's almost like a, it's almost, almost like an advertisement for Kuna, you know? It has, we've been rated, you know, this by these associations. We offer these tax incentives.
We're so great.
Here's our location, you know? So yeah, and Middleton needs to do that. And then that hasn't happened yet, which is a minor annoyance to me, but trying to do that. Um.
So essentially what you're doing is figuring out, look, what would be a deterrent, right? And at least in part, the hookup. But one of the problems that, that I observe in these areas is that you really have to, it's, it's not just the fact of attracting the, the business on paper, right? Like, say I have an insurance company, or I have a, like, say I want to make Matt's Burgers, because I love burgers. Say I want to make Matt's Burgers. It's not like, okay, great. Like, where's the restaurant going out of business? Where's a, you know, the vacant spot where I could, you know, that's zoned appropriately and I could insert a kitchen, like all these things. It's like, there really aren't places, so we have to build something.
Yeah.
Right? And that's a unique problem in a developing area in that it's like, okay, it's not just attracting the business on paper. It's actually building out the infrastructure, um, physically building the building that can come in. So you have this dual problem of like, okay, I need a developer, because like, it's kind of rare that you're gonna have the developer be the business owner as well. Like, if I own a, if I own a burger place, like, I'm, I'm not really in the business of development. I need somebody else to build the building. And maybe I'm cool and I'm like, I'll do it myself. But anyway, the point is, you have that dual problem of attracting the tax base. So that first step is obviously, okay, well, we need to get the developers to invest in this area. And if the, the soft cost, which is of course the impact hookup, or is me the, the hookup fees, if the soft cost right out of the blocks is substantially more than someone else, they're like, well, this is taking directly away from our bottom line. Let's just go somewhere else. So that's part of addressing it. Um, one person was talking about, uh, or people have been talking about traffic patterns within, within Middleton, right? That there's, you know, there's been talk of a, of a bypass for, for some time, or, um, I can't remember exactly what. I think it's like, you know what I'm talking about, like a bypass.
Oh, we can, we can deep dive into that.
Okay, hit me with it. Cause that's one thing that people are like, yeah, if the businesses don't know what the plan is, it's gonna be really hard to attract the developers in to build because they want to have a substantial amount of traffic, depending on what kind of business you are, right? If you're a destination, you don't need that. But if you're something like Matt's Burger Place, I want as many eyeballs going past my spot as possible. So the developers aren't gonna build for like retail eyeball spots if they don't know where the traffic pattern's gonna be.
Right. Bypass. So it's my understanding that ITD first started planning some sort of bypass all the way back in like the seventies. They started seriously getting into it in the nineties and actually started, you know, laying out plans in the early 2000s. Uh, the city, um, I don't know what year it was. It was in the 20 teens, actually tried to help ITD to build the bypass. So the city bought up a bunch of what was at that time, and actually still is agricultural land that kind of goes through the heart of the town. So the city was trying to help so the ITD didn't have to come in and negotiate with landowners or do eminent domain. They could just go to the city and, you know, clean transaction because the city already owns it. Well, as time went on and the town grew and the town developed, the needs of the town changed, you know? So what had been planned before going from, if you know Middleton, 44 comes in, and then at the Chevron, it kind of cuts north, goes through town. Um, the bypass is proposed to kick off just before that Chevron on the east side of town. It'll go down through, um, what is a currently developing commercial development and kill whatever businesses would be going in there. Would go straight through the currently existing Pioneer Federal Credit Union, wipe that out, through the parking lot of, uh, multiple businesses like Middleton Espresso, Papi's Pizza, there's a chiropractic office, there's, uh, I think four others in there. Probably wipe them out because including rights of way, it would cut into that parking lot so much, I don't see those businesses surviving. Then it continues west and goes through, um, Middleton Road and, I forget the name of the road, doesn't matter. And there's this plot of, uh, 20 to 30 acres, I think it is, of what is right now just, uh, an ag field. But we have a plan to be what's gonna be called Crane Creek Plaza. So it's gonna be Middleton's version of Indian Creek and Caldwell.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And the city doesn't even own that land anymore. The urban renewal district does. Well, they're close to paying it off. But so that's part of the urban renewal district, which is created by the city, but it's a separate entity.
Yeah, yeah.
Wipes out at least half of that land. So there's no more Crane Creek Plaza. We'd be stuck with, you know, a strip mall or two, if even that. And then it continues west through more ag land, which is part of our wastewater treatment system. So we use partially treated wastewater. We water alfalfa crops with it. The ground filters the water, takes out the phosphates and whatever else is required by regulations to be taken out, and then goes down into Aquifer, joins the river.
You, you guys currently do this?
Yeah.
And is that alfalfa, does that alfalfa ag land, is that owned by the city of Middleton?
Yeah, the city owns, uh, I forget how many acres. It's, it's a substantial sum though, yeah.
So, and then do you guys like harvest the alfalfa? Like, is this a functional ag production?
Yeah, it gets leased out to some farmer, I don't know who, and, and he grows the alfalfa and he harvests it, and I assume he sells it somewhere.
That's, so I didn't know that Middleton did that. I have the, uh, I have, uh, the guy for Public Works coming in soon, but, um, I did know that Boise Public Works has 20 Mile Farm, because it's 20 mile away from, you know, the, the, uh, water district, or excuse me, the, the city. But they do something very similar, which I always thought was wild. Like, they use, but instead of just using water, they actually make fertilizer at the wastewater treatment plant. Of course, it goes through all these biological digesters and all this stuff. And then they fertilize this farm that's like 20 miles away, and they have an actual production where it's like 4,500 acres. So, but, so you guys do something similar, except you're using partially treated water that then not only grows the crops and has that, but also then recharges the aquifer sitting under, um, Middleton.
Well, yeah, but at that specific place, it's not really a concern because it's so close to the river that the aquifer is about two inches under the surface. But, um, yeah, and that is a huge, uh, cost-saving measure to taxpayers in Middleton. So right now, and this is another hot button, uh, issue, but we're gonna be upgrading our wastewater treatment system. And that's not something that we want to do. It's something that we have to do under state and federal, uh, regulations, which we currently don't meet. We have to upgrade. Um, so if we, going back to the bypass, the bypass goes through all that land. Well, we have to have a certain minimum number of acres to treat, um, that water on. So if we lose, I don't know, 20 acres because there's this five lane equivalent bypass with rights of way and all that junk, it's possible that that entire wastewater treatment system will land application and recycling system is, I think, what Jason will tell you to call it. I call it Lars. That's my nickname for it.
Okay.
If we lose our Lars, um, when we go to upgrade our wastewater system, that's a cost of somewhere between 10 and 20 million dollars that we have to make up for, um, based on what the function, or rather, what is accomplished by watering the alfalfa. So like cooling towers, filtration systems, chemicals, all these other things that we'd have to add.
What I hear you saying is the bypass in its current iteration is a really bad idea.
Well, so what I always tell people is, you know, because they go, well, ITD is recommending this. Well, ITD is looking at what ITD does, which is moving cars. ITD wants to move cars. If that's your only concern, then yeah, the southern bypass is the best option. But if you take a comprehensive look at the overall impacts to the city and the community, it's absolutely devastating. We lose absolutely crucial, uh, commercial land that is gonna be like the future of Middleton, the heart of Middleton. Then we lose our wastewater, uh, application system. Then it cuts through our city shop land. It takes a bunch of that where we're currently trying to expand our city shop. Then it goes through a bunch of private property, the owners of which have no interest in selling or losing that land. And then it reconnects, um, on the west side of town. So yeah, it's absolutely devastating. So when ITD was going through their PEL process, which is the preliminary environmental linkage process, they came up with, I think originally it was like eight or nine different variants, but they narrowed it down to four. And that was short bypass, long bypass, widening main street, or a couplet. So you would have existing main street, which is currently a, uh, two lane, two-way, right? Um, so where was it at? I think it was at the same location, right about that Chevron. Main street would turn into a two lane, um, one-way westbound, and then a new road would be created.
And again, this is essentially because you have a bunch of traffic engineers that are like, hey, if we want to most effectively move traffic, this is a good way to do it. These are not real estate investors. These are not, uh, you know, economic planners. These are not school people. These are, so, because you have the utilization of, of city, you know, transit corridors, you have to serve a lot of different people with a lot of different goals. And ITD's like, hey, man, how can we just move cars? And it's like, yeah, that's one, that's a, that's a take.
Well, you, you run into this with all kinds of different organizations and entities. So like, um, Greg Tominski with, uh, Star and Middleton Fire. He's gotten quite mad at me a few times because I proposed something which is bad for fire. It may be bad for fire, but it's good for these, you know, three, four, or five other things. You know, when you work for fire, or you work for ITD, or you work for CH4, you're looking at, you know, uh, protecting for fire. You're looking at moving traffic. You're looking at, you know, whatever, you're one lane. When you're running a city, you have to look at everything. A comprehensive look at all the services and systems and taxing entities and find the best path forward for everyone. You know, you don't have the luxury of just looking at one aspect.
Yeah, man. Okay, so the bypass is a really complex, difficult thing. Understood. We have, so just to recap so far, residential plot maps have ground to a halt over the last couple of years.
New applications.
New applications. The growth is still occurring, but that was growth that was approved previously.
Yeah. And some of that goes back to like 2010. We have developments which are still being built out, which, which were approved in the early 2000s.
Gotcha. Um, long before you were on the, you were on the city council or anybody else was on the, that currently sitting on the city council was in, in office. Um, so you have that. You have, traffic is a complex thing because obviously a bypass to alleviate, uh, some of the traffic going through the center of Middleton is, for all intents and purposes, not feasible with the existing ideas and plans that the city has. Um, you, and again, this is a consideration when you're dealing with economic growth, right? Because you, like, look, we need continuity throughout our plan, um, to attract commercial businesses, um, and commercial development. But, you know, it's, it's all over the place.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So I've kind of summarized a lot, yeah? Okay, great. Um, talk to me about law enforcement. Where, what's the state of, of Middleton's police service? Does it need more funding? You know, same funding? What do you think?
I mean, I'm sure if you brought like the chief in here, he'd tell you that he has, you know, a need for this or that. But our current council and, you know, previous like Kerry Huggins, um, we have always done everything we can to support our law enforcement. And as long as it's within our ability to give it to them, I don't think we've ever told them no. And that, actually, I don't think I've told you this story yet. So back in, um, I think it was March, uh, one of the police officers reached out to me because they had found a canine unit. But the hitch was that the, the dog was in Texas. And there's only apparently one airline that allows actual canines, you know, not like a little Chihuahua, right? But actual canine unit to fly in the airplane. But there's, but there's so many regulations and rules that go along with it. It makes it exceedingly difficult. So they decided that they were gonna drive down to just outside Houston, Texas and pick up this dog and come back.
Get some rest, hang out.
Oh, no, no, no. Cause they actually did it on their weekend.
Oh, snap.
And they said, well, we have three drivers and we want four. Will you come with us? I wasn't very happy, but I said yes. So they picked me up early one morning and we drove down into Utah, through Salt Lake, up into the mountains, through Moab, and at, um, uh, Monticello, I think it is, uh, hook East through the southwest corner of Colorado, down into New Mexico, and, and I think in Colorado is where we, where we hit nighttime and it got dark. Drove through all of New Mexico, crossed the border into Texas, drove across almost all of Texas to outside Houston. Straight shot, straight shot. No, I mean, just stopping for gas. Pick up the dog, turn around, same thing, straight back. No hotels, no stop southern gas stations, 57 hour straight drive with four dudes. And one of them actually came down with an eye infection during the drive, so he couldn't drive at all as I was all watering and everything. It was a hell of a trip. 57 hours straight with four dudes.
Can I, can I tell you something? I got you beat.
What, what'd you do?
I did Anchorage, Alaska to Berkeley, California with just, with just me and my brother. We didn't stop, and he tapped out in Portland. And I drove the last leg of the 53 hour trip, which was like 10 hours overnight with a kayak attached to the top of the RAV4, and I hit the Bay Area in the middle of rush hour traffic. So I was like.
We did that both ways at Dallas-Fort Worth. Both ways. We hit, we hit morning rush hour on the way in and, uh, uh, end of day rush hour at the, sorry.
It was, it was so brutal.
How many hours was it total?
It was, uh, 53 hours, straight shot.
Well, I did 57. What do you mean you got me beat?
Cause there were only two of us, and then there was only one of us for the last 10 hours.
Doesn't count.
Get the hell out of here. Get the, I'm not hanging out with a bunch of cool dudes. I'm hanging out with my jerk brother, like.
Well, we had a dog with us too on the way back.
That would have been awesome. I'll take the dog over my brother. It would have been better conversation.
He kept trying to chew up my boots.
I'm sure he did. I'm sure he did. Very nice boots. Anyway.
So the point being that, um, law enforcement in Middleton is good. We now have, well, we did have two canine units. One of them failed out of trading, so we were back down to one. But we always try to give them whatever, whatever they want, as long as we have the means to do so. Um.
And you had a free weekend, nothing to do. You just look at you committing your life, driving to Texas and back.
Best, best two and a half days of my life.
Got. All right. So law enforcement, bottom line is, it's, it's possible that they need more, but you guys are, you guys are, you feel supplying them with sufficient amount and you're happy with the state of law enforcement in Middleton.
Well, and starting, what, two years ago, I proposed that, um, when we were putting together our budget for, uh, the next fiscal year, that we include a council discretionary fund. Because you frequently have things pop up mid-fiscal year that are not in the budget. And so then you have to pull money from something else that is budgeted to, you know, do this project, buy new tasers, whatever it is. Um, and so for the last two years, we have had a $100,000 council discretionary fund to address whatever pops up mid-year that's not budgeted. And that has benefited, um, the PD multiple times. They got, um, new tasers with it. They got the canine unit with it. I want to say there's something else too. We've also signaledized, um, some crosswalks, you know, with flashing lights and all that with the discretionary fund. So that's come in really, really handy. And apparently our treasurer hates it for some reason. It makes her job hard. I don't know why. And she tried to take it out, but I didn't let that happen. It's, it's been too, it's come in too handy, you know, to be able to pivot mid-year and just say, okay, we're gonna take care of this project now.
Sure.
That we didn't know about, you know, three weeks ago or two months ago.
Sure, 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 sure. Um, development, residential, commercial, traffic, law enforcement, um, what are we, what are we missing here?
Uh, well, I think we should talk about the wastewater upgrade because that's been a hot button issue here recently. So it's, um, it's being promoted that we're, um, putting this $78 million, uh, burden on the backs of taxpayers. It's like, it's something that we want to do, which is also a burden to us. We all.
We love wastewater. You just, you call me all the time. You're like, I'm so pumped about this wastewater.
Matt, let's talk about the wastewater.
Kentucky did, look at it. You're sending me pictures like they're centerfold. You're like, whoa, whoa. Look at those cooling towers. Yeah, that's not a sexy topic.
No, but it's an important one. Um, but this is not an upgrade that we want to do. You know, uh, Jason Ben Gilder, our public works director, on behalf of the administration, the mayor, came to us, um, and said, this is our proposal. This is what we need to do. And we tried to explore alternative, alternatives, you know, we, we asked him to, to, you know, is there any way that we can avoid doing this? Is there, um, a grant out there somewhere? And he's been looking for grants. This is not something that we want to do. This is something we have to do under state and federal guidelines. So like, um, one of the important things that that alfalfa watering does is it removes phosphorus and it lowers the temperature of the water.
Right.
You know, so they, they introduce all these new regulations as to what we must do to discharge water into the river.
Right, right, right.
And that's not our choice. You know, we don't enjoy placing millions of dollars of burden on taxpayers. But when you want to run a responsible government, you have to do that. Now, what was it? Um, there was a gal from the Idaho Department of, uh, was it, what's the environmental organization?
Ag? Oh, no, the envi- environment.
Anyways, the state.
Environmental equality. Yeah, yeah.
And she came down a while back to talk about our permit. And this is just an example of what can happen if you don't meet the regulations that you need to. If we violate the permit that we're gonna get from her organization, they can fine us as much as $22,000 a day. A day. So what's more responsible? To upgrade as we're being required to do by government levels above us, or to, you know, pout, and we're not gonna do that. And then we start getting fined. How quickly does $22,000 a day add up?
I mean, that's like between six and eight million a year, man. That's a dump truck of money.
You know, running responsible government does not mean that you get to do the popular thing. It doesn't mean you're always gonna make people happy, but sometimes. But sometimes you have to do things that you don't want to do. And you know, um, right now it's being advertised that, you know, council did this. Well, the mayor's been on board with it. The public works director is the one, he's the expert in charge, you know? The council is a part-time body. We can only do or know so much. We have to rely upon city officers who do this for a living. They do it every day. So if our public works director tells us, you have to under law, do this thing, then we have to find the best path forward under law and under his recommendation. That's why he has that job and you have the pleasure of speaking with him this afternoon.
Yeah, yeah. And you know, I actually met him, uh, just by happenstance, uh, about a month or two ago, and we've been lining up show. This is before actually I knew that there was a big problem going on because I had, I had, uh, at that time I had recently met, um, Steve Burgo with the Boise Public Works. And I was like, this is really wild. Like these are really fundamental pieces of our communities that I didn't know anything about. And they in fact are, they're working on a different wastewater treatment mechanism to actually reroute that, reroute wastewater that's been cleaned up to a point where it can functionally be used in industrial application.
Yeah.
Which is an interesting proposition because they currently discharge about 30,000 acre feet of water into the Boise River every year. Now that's water that's been cooled, been cleaned, the whole thing and can be used downstream for something else. If they start rerouting that 30,000 acre feet of water back to like micron, who owns that water? Right? The question is like, who has the water rights? Well, it's like wastewater. So like nobody, I guess nobody owns it. Uh, like the person flushed it down the toilet and then like it got like, wait, so who owns it? Cause of course I'm sure the, the water users, uh, you know, downstream would be interested in 30,000 acre feet. I know Idaho power would be interested in 30,000 acre feet.
Is Micron going to be paying them for that?
Yeah. So they would just be rerouting it. They'll clean it up to the point where for industrial use, non potable water, right? Industrial use, don't drink out of it. But like, if you're cooling things off or engaging in manufacturing or industrial things, like, yeah, this is, this is as clean as any other water we're going to be, and they'll be paying for it, right? But again, the question is if you're now rerouting 30,000 acre feet of water out of the river that you would have put in there anyway. Like, does anybody have a claim to that water? Anyway, this is going to a rabbit hole. The point is that's why I got Jason because I was like, I'd love to talk about your municipal issues.
Well, would that also affect river levels?
Yes.
Like how significant?
Listen, 30,000 acre feet.
Right.
Yeah. That's a lot of water. Like we're increasing the height of Anderson Ranch Dam.
Yeah.
That's like 25,000 acre feet. And it only occurs when the, when the reservoir fills up all the way, which is going to be like every third year. So think about like every third year, you get 25,000 feet of storage, right? Or acre feet of storage verse 30,000 every single year, like clockwork. These are, these are complex questions. That's Boise.
That's a lot of water.
That's a lot of water, baby. Anyway, I appreciate you, Dave. Listen, I'm, I'm really sorry that like we're, we're kind of short on time today. We hit it, we hit it. Listen, no big deal. We've hit a lot of things and I, I appreciate where you're coming from, which is like, look, this is, you know, your, your capacity to just say, hey, I don't want to is I think what you're saying, like I, you really don't have that. When somebody's like, yeah, look, we'll fine you six to eight million dollars annually. If you don't do this, it's like, okay, well, maybe I don't want to, but who wants to pay $68 million in fines for no particular reason and then have to solve the problem anyway, somewhere, somewhere down the road.
Oh, it's IDEQ. That's the organization I'm trying to think of. Yeah.
Idaho Department of Environmental Quality.
Well, let me just, do we have like two more minutes?
Yeah, two more. Go, go, go.
You kind of touched on it earlier, um, talking about gaining consensus and only having, you know, certain powers and abilities. You know, you see it in council races across the valley where somebody decides to run for office and they say like, there was one guy in Star who was saying, well, I'm going to put up temporary roundabouts. What is a temporary roundabout? That's not even a thing. And how, how are you going to do that?
What's that game? What's that game? The, the, in, at the elementary schools where they have like the corral? It's like pudgy pit or something. I can't remember. But like they hit, they just stand in a corral and hit the ball. It's like, are you going to put up a temporary one of those? I don't even know who this is. Like I didn't, I didn't get to interview everybody in Star.
I don't remember who it was that said it, but I was told. But anyway, anyway, so what I want, I want to point out is that people will promise you a lot of things.
Gaga pit.
Local government is the hardest level of government, in my opinion, to make operate efficiently and effectively. Because, you know, at the federal level, the Fed answers, you know, to itself, to the various branches, the constitution. Outside of that, that's it. They're the Fed. They make the rules. The state operates under the Fed and you know, with the other branches of state level. You got county and then you've got local and we have to operate under all these other layers of government within the parameters of the constitution, state legislation, all these. And then we have to coordinate with like Canyon Highway District Four, ITD, uh, ambulance district, fire district. And with, within all that mess, you have to find solutions. You have to make it work. There's no magic wand that you come in and a single city council member is going to go, all your problems are solved, you know? You have to know how the system works, know where the levers are and know how to pull them. So if somebody's telling you something and, um, everything they, they are telling you makes you smile, they either don't know what they're talking about or they're lying.
God, that's a, that's a good point. Um, Dave, I appreciate you. Thank you for coming in. Thanks for making the time. I know we got, had a hard time scheduling, got you right here at the end, um, but I appreciate you, you know, again, win, lose or draw, it's really important that we have people stepping up to the table to take the heat, to do, you know, run campaigns and then actually do the job. And it's a thankless job. It's not one that I could do, um, or would ever consider doing. Um, but you know, again, I appreciate you.
I appreciate you, Matt.
Yeah. Good luck with the campaign and, uh, maybe we'll do it again.